Good afternoon, everyone. Call the meeting to order for the June 8 study session. Madam Clerk?
I'll be conducting the roll call verbally. Councilmember Brenner. Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Dixon.
Here.
Via Zoom. Councilmember Blom.
Here.
Councilmember Duffield.
Here.
Mayor Protem Muldoon is currently absent. Mayor Avery.
Here. Thank you. So we'll move into current business, and the first item is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Brenner, do you need any clarification regarding any items? Thank you. Councilmember O'Neil?
Done.
Councilmember Dixon?
No.
Councilmember Blom?
No.
Councilmember Duffield?
I have none.
And I have none. Mayor Protem, do you have any questions on the consent calendar? Thank you. So our next item is review of the draft housing element. And Mr. Juerges is at his post.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Avery and city council members. I'm Simone Juerges, your community development director. This is really a progress update from our last meeting when we talked about the housing element. We got some feedback from the city council at the last study session. We want to share that with you, but also we have some concerns with regards to some of the buffer issues that we've talked about last time. So we want to share those concerns with you, share some different options, and really kind of get feedback from the city council. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the deputy director, Jim Campbell, and he'll make the presentation, and then we're here to answer your questions. Thank you.
Mayor Avery. Jim Campbell, you're deputy community development director. So at the last study session, which is April 27th, we got some feedback from the council on the housing plan. I'll get a little closer to Mike. Sorry about that. You know, we had a variety of assumptions built into that housing plan, and the council gave us some direction. They suggested that we increase the ADUs to about 1,000 units, and we had a number in there that was about 375. Additionally, you asked us to look at increasing the density of Banning Ranch and Coyote Canyon, so we took a look at that, and you can see some of the results here. We added 100 units to Banning Ranch, and we added 220 units to Coyote Canyon. You also asked that we look at the affordability assumptions throughout the entire areas that we studied, and so we looked at that. The buffer, you wanted the buffer reduced. I think it was an overall strategy to reduce the overall unit counts throughout the housing plan, so we took that direction, and you'll see the results of this momentarily. Additionally, again, the overall was to reduce the overall rezones. You also asked us to add and/or remove properties that want to be or don't want to be included in the housing plan, and so we accommodated those requests. So before we get into how all this comes together, I kind of want to set the stage and go through some questions and answers that kind of help guide the discussion. One of the questions that we've been fielding is that why can't we just plan for a limited number of 100% affordable projects? And that would reduce the overall number quite considerably if we only planned for 100% affordable housing projects. Now, this is really too restrictive, and it would preclude mixed-income housing projects, which are pretty much how affordable housing has developed these days. Now, we have to identify sites by EPN that are suitable for different income categories, and we just don't have substantial evidence of any project out there that would be 100% affordable. We don't have financing, we don't have a property, we don't have a project, and we don't have entitlements in place. So we really can't build a plan around 100% affordable projects. Why do we need a buffer at all? Why can't we just plan for the minimum number, if you will? Well, not every project's going to meet the affordability assumptions that are contained in the housing plan, and we cannot deny the project if it doesn't measure up to the assumptions that are built into the plan. We just simply can't do it. Now, we talked before about no net loss, so if there's actually a loss of opportunities because a project doesn't measure up to the assumptions in the plan, we have to make sure that those units that are not built are accounted for in the plan. And if we fall below zero, if we had no buffer at all, we would be required to find additional sites to accommodate that need within 180 days. And what I mean by that is we actually have to go find that site, find a willing property owner, go in and rezone it, and actually have all those entitlements in place within 180 days. And that's a difficult prospect with environmental review and potentially a vote of the electorate if it required a general plan amendment. So it really kind of sets the stage for why staff is recommending that we have a small buffer. So what is the recommendation on a buffer? Well, HCD recommends a 20% to 30% surplus buffer to avoid that 180-day rezone requirement. So that's just a recommendation of HCD, so we can come up with our own. So, you know, what is an inclusionary housing ordinance? And can one eliminate? Can that help eliminate the buffer that we would be planning for? Basically, an inclusionary housing ordinance is just a mandate that a minimum percentage of the housing in a project is made for affordable units. Now, high percentages will make projects very, very difficult to finance, and in many cases, they might be financially infeasible. Now, if the inclusion percentage closely matches the housing plan assumptions, like if we assume 60% for a particular area, and if that was the assumption, now while that may be a high percentage, it might make the project infeasible, and we might get no housing production, you know, but that would also eliminate maybe the need to do a buffer. So you can kind of see the relationship between how inclusionary housing ordinance is and how that buffer might play. And I'm going to go over an example of how this works in a little bit. I'm going to switch gears here and move to ADUs. We've had a lot of discussions about ADUs, and we've been asked to increase the ADUs in the housing plan, and state law does allow ADUs to satisfy arena based on past production, the need for the units, the resources or incentives available to encourage their construction, or any other relevant factors determined by HCD. I don't know what that means either. The accepted methodology is, again, closely related to past production, and we haven't had a very high past production in the original housing plan. And you'll see these numbers again. We assumed that we have the ability to support about 385 or 380 units, and the safe harbor approach is 175 units. But can we boost ADU assumptions? Well, the answer is yes, we can, but we must have policies that incentivize that construction to ensure the community meets that construction estimate. And remember, the city isn't going to build these; individual homeowners are going to build these. Now, can we boost ADUs even higher? We've had suggestions to boost it to 1,500 units, and you'll see that here in a little bit, but we do not believe that that's a viable option. You know, in our conversations with HCD, they are not going to accept 1,500 units as a suggestion. You know, we don't know what those, if that's not based on past performance, or what those incentives would be, so we just don't feel that's appropriate. Now, what if the community falls short of the ADU construction estimate? Well, as you know, we report housing production to HCD every year annually, and if construction falls short, there's going to be a monitoring effort going forward, and if we fall short, we're going to need to find other sites to accommodate what's not being constructed over the planning period. So in about two to three years, we'll have to find more sites and rezone them. So it's as simple as that. All right, I'm going to switch gears here and talk about the overlay. You know, the policies in the rezone strategies talk about an overlay or similar strategy that provide these housing opportunities. So we want to kind of explain what that is. You know, you have a property, you've got existing zoning, and housing might not be allowed. It might be allowed, but then the housing overlay would be an added opportunity that would not disturb the existing zoning or uses. I want to make that clear. It wouldn't have any effect, and it would be voluntary for a property owner to take advantage of this. There's nothing mandatory about it. Now, if they do take advantage of it, they would have to meet the standards that are in the housing overlay. So whatever development standards are there, building height, setbacks, parking, whatever, would be there. Now, it would only exist to meet the arena need, so once it's satisfied, it would no longer be available. That's the whole purpose of the overlay, is to provide the housing opportunities to meet the arena need, but not beyond that. You know, we're hearing loud and clear from the community and through the council that we want to limit the number of units in the housing plan, and this is one way to do it. So the timing of all this would be done concurrently with the update of the land use element. We have to do this within 36 months, and that's reflected in the policies of the plan. Now, we want to get to the summary of the housing strategies. And so this is a summary of the numbers that were contained in the previous draft that the council saw on April 27th. Again, going back to what the first slide, you know, the council wanted us to increase the ADUs to 1,000 units, look at the density of Banning Ranch, Coyote Canyon, look at the affordability assumptions so that we're not putting all the affordable units in any one particular area. We wanted the buffer reduced, and add and remove certain properties. And so what's, that direction was reflected in this council feedback plan. We'll call it option one. So what this allowed us to do, and you can see there, and I apologize, this is a little small, but you'll see in red on the bottom, 1,080 units are in there. The airport area and Newport Center, those numbers came down, and how we were able to do that is because we boosted density and affordable units at Coyote Canyon and Banning Ranch. We also included, obviously, increased ADUs, and that allowed us to reduce the overall number of units throughout the entire community. We did have to go in and modify the redevelopment percentages and the affordability percentages, you know, those main columns in the middle of the table that are in green, and that helped redistribute the units a little more evenly throughout the community. Now, you also notice the buffer in the bottom is 5%, which was council's direction. Now, we are concerned about a 5% buffer because it's not a lot of units there. And I'm going to go through an example a little bit later that's going to show you how a project might come in and doesn't measure up, and then actually we'd fall short, and we'd have to go find a rezone, and hence why the buffer is important and why we're recommending a slightly larger buffer than 5%. All right, so here's the summary of all those units. Again, 1,000 units. Now, the critical number here maybe to look at and focus on is the overall rezone strategies was reduced from 6,873 units to 5,038, so that's a 1,700-unit reduction. So that's going in the right direction. Again, this is with the 5% buffer. But we also want to take a look at a couple of other options because, as I said, we're concerned about the size of the buffer. So this has a larger buffer. It's still a smaller buffer than what HCD requires, but it's larger than what council suggested at the last meeting. And so there are more rezones, if you will, or additional units in the rezone strategy. And so here, we did also assume 1,000 units for ADUs, and the total net units is 5,600, I believe, 5,615. So this is a reduction from the version that the council saw previously of 1,200 units. So again, it's going in the right direction, but as you'll notice on the very bottom, the very low and moderate-income buffers are 17% and 20%. I'm sorry, here's the summary table that you can see those numbers a little bit better. Again, this is a reduction of about 1,258 units total. All right, so we also came up with a third option. Again, as we indicated, we've been hearing a lot about and discussing, you know, can we just go with a more finite number of 100% affordable projects? You know, fewer mixed-income projects. And so you'll notice in this scenario here, and we bring this scenario up just for discussion purposes today. This is not an option that we feel is viable or we're recommending, but for discussion purposes, we wanted to kind of show what the numbers will look like. And so what you'll see here is higher affordability percentages across the board, and what this allows us to do, we also increased the ADUs because, remember, we discussed earlier, you know, can we boost the ADUs even more than 1,000 units? So let's go with 1,500. That was a number that has been discussed. So that's reflected in this option. Again, this is not an option that we actually recommend, and so here are the summary numbers. And then the rezone strategies total comes to 3,824, and that's a 3,000-unit decrease from what was originally presented to the city council. Now, the buffers are a little bit larger here, and possibly those could be reduced, but this is just really to kind of show, you know, a different option. Again, for discussion purposes, but the problem with this is that it relies upon multiple 100% affordable projects. And so, you know, again, these are projects that we don't have evidence that they exist, we don't have subsidies, we don't have the policy framework that would be necessary to really say that those projects are feasible. Also, a 1,500 ADUs, as indicated earlier, will not be supported by HCD, so this is an option, again, that we do not recommend. Again, it was there for discussion purposes. And so here's a summary of those options. The original plan that the council saw on April 27th is in the first column under original. So option one is the plan derived from council's direction at that last meeting, and so you can see the reductions from 6,800 to 5,038. The buffers are 5% for very low and moderate income, and so it brings the surplus units quite down. Option two is that other option I discussed, and this one has a slightly larger buffer. Again, this is driven by staff's concern that we're going to need a slightly larger buffer, and I did promise that alternative, that example, in a moment. And there's option three, again, the one that we don't recommend. It obviously has the fewest number of units, and while that may seem desirable, and I can appreciate the desire to do that, obviously, we just don't think that that's a viable option for the reasons I. So I want to go through that option, I'm sorry, that example, and it all has to come to do with this no net loss that we've talked about before. And so I'm going to run through an example here of how a particular project might measure up to the housing plan, and in addition, we're going to throw in how an inclusionary ordinance might work. And so, you know, one of the policies that's in the housing plan is a 15% inclusionary requirement. So 15% of all projects would have to provide, all projects would have to provide 15% affordable units. And so how does that work for a housing site? And so we chose the Coyote Canyon project where we're anticipating 1,100 units to be developed with 25% being very low-income units and 15% being moderate-income units. How would that really work? So if the developer comes in and builds the full density, and they come in with 15% for very low or low income, and they come in with 5% for moderate income, and 880 above moderate units, and this would comply with that inclusionary requirement, that interim requirement that we talked about that's in our housing plan today or the draft plan, now what would that do to our buffer? This is what happens to the buffer. So the housing plan expects 275 very low or low-income units and 165 units of moderate, and the developer comes in with a project that complies with our standards, and the difference is what we have to deal with. Those 110 units in both income categories, those units have to be in the housing plan. And if we fall below, again, going back to our 5% buffer option, we would run into a scenario that if our 5% buffer were the standard, we would be deficient on one project, and we anticipate that we'll have several projects, multiple projects, actually.
And let me go ahead and interject. And so this is our biggest concern with that option one that the council gave us direction on. And with the Coyote Canyon project, we've been talking to the potential applicant for that site, and we know that, you know, they really want to develop an affordable housing project, but with our plan, which is really a 40% plan, that's what the housing element says, and if they're going to come in less than that, we just don't, with the option one, we don't have enough buffer units to close that gap. So this is really a strong concern for staff that the 5% buffer that the council has suggested is probably not going to be enough to support Coyote Canyon, the airport area, Newport Center for those future projects that do come in.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, can I speak to that for a second?
Yes, please.
Yeah, because that, that's actually been one of the things that I've been trying to wrestle with as well, because there's only, in our, in this plan, there are two areas where it's controlled by one landowner. One of them is Banning Ranch, one of them is Coyote Canyon. So with Coyote Canyon, the county had, I think we all kind of know Banning Ranch well enough that I'm not going to speak to that, but the Coyote Canyon, the initial expectation from the county was that they would be looking only at a golf course since it's a, you know, dump site over there. And it was the developer that ended up with the site that realized there's a small parcel, maybe we could put some housing on it, but it's not required, and they do have, they do have the sole option agreement right now with the county. So although the county is the owner, effectively, there's one entity that has control over what the land use is over there, at least for a little while. And so this is what I've been trying to kind of, I've been wrestling with this too, so I'm glad to hear that you all are working with, working through this, because when you have one developer, you know, they kind of determine what's feasible or not, and if they get to the point where they look at a requirement that is too high for them, then they just say, that's okay, we're just going to build the golf course, and we go from, you know, hundreds to zero.
And we need the site.
Right. And that's kind of where we've gotten to, which is just bizarre to me because up until, you know, seven or eight months ago, we, I don't think, well, maybe a little longer, I don't think anyone knew that we could even do any housing on there, but now we've found that site, and it makes sense. But if we went to zero on that, it compacts it and puts it, you know, more into Newport Center area or airport area. Same thing, by the way, I'm sure we'll talk about Banning Ranch. Same thing about Banning Ranch. If we saw that go away, then it compacts a lot more into a much smaller area. And so, so this is, could you go back a slide because I'm trying, I want to make sure I'm trying to understand that, yeah. So let's say that we, even if we adopted a housing element or at least proposed a housing element, let's say, let's say we had proposed a housing element that had this, this included 25 and 15, so we're now at 40%. If we went through, we submitted, they came back, they said that's fine, HCD says that's fine, council adopts it down the road. First off, to be very clear, it still doesn't mean that all, like, let me back up. Let's assume that they also submitted a project at this size. Does that go to a green light vote? Because, I mean, we're not updating our land use element, so is this much density, would this much density require a green light vote in that area?
If it's, if it's going to be submitted before we update our land use element, then the answer is yes.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Okay. See, and that's probably, that's kind of worth remembering for everybody in the, when we're working this through is, we're only talking housing element. The housing element, as adopted, would be, would be out of compliance, or not out of compliance, but just would not sync with the land use element because we haven't updated the land use element. There's no question the land use element with this much would require a green light vote.
Exactly.
And in between now and then, between the adoption of the housing element and the adoption of the land use element and subsequent green light vote, if projects came forward that would normally require a green light vote under the current land use element, it would still require, it has to go to green light.
That's correct.
Okay. So ignore that for just a second, but that, I just want to make sure everyone understands that that is still a discussion point. Assume for a moment that we adopt this housing, a housing element, the housing element anticipates 40% affordable. They submit in 15% or 20%, and it would, in compliance with, let's say, the, an inclusionary zoning ordinance, or they just come to us and say, we cannot do better than this. And if we can't do, if we can't do more than this because it's not feasible, then we're going to go to zero. And then it comes to us at the housing, at the city council, and we need to make a decision. Do we approve it or not approve it? If we approved it, does that require a general plan amendment to the housing element at that point?
It wouldn't require a change to the housing element. You know, that project comes forward and it is not measuring up to the assumptions of the plan, so, and that would be fine as long as it measures up to the inclusionary housing ordinance that we may have. And so now the difference between the housing plan and the project is this hypothetical difference that you see here. That difference, whatever it might be in the final analysis, has to be in the housing plan somewhere. We can't dip below zero.
That's the, that's the no net loss issue.
That's your no net loss issue. And so this is why we feel it's very important to have, you know, a reasonably sizable buffer to accommodate, you know, the projects that we might anticipate over the next eight years.
Yeah, see, that's, and that's really important for folks to understand, and one of the complicating factors of trying to even work through this. You can adopt a housing element with, you know, goals and expectations for areas and then have it, and then have a council approve something that varies from it, not the land use side, but I'm talking, I'm talking about the housing element side. You can have it vary, but then, and not violate your general plan, but in, potentially violate your housing, the housing plan that you've submitted to HCD, at which point they can consider your housing element to be out of compliance, at which point there's a whole bunch of ramifications that our friends to the north, our city to the north have discovered. So, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And we can't deny any applicant submitting a housing project if it complies with our inclusionary ordinance. So if they have a housing project and have affordable housing, we can't say, no, you have to, you can't submit it. We'll have to accept it and process the application.
Yeah, and I imagine that HCD even at some point has to look at an inclusionary zoning ordinance and say, it's sort of the Goldilocks approach, not too hot, not too cold, because if you, if you put a zoning, inclusionary zoning ordinance that says 80%, they're going to say, no one's going to build at 80%, right? Okay. All right. I know that was, that was a lot to digest what I just went through, but I needed to wrestle with that, so appreciate that.
Hey, very good. Good discussion. So, so back to the summary of options, you know, staff is recommending option two, which is a slightly higher buffer than what council suggested at the last meeting. It is an overall decrease in the units that we'd be affording in the rezone strategies. It's not as low as you might otherwise get with option three, but again, option three is definitely something we do not recommend. It's not a viable option. Again, it's for discussion purposes. So with that, we wanted to get council's feedback, you know, what option or mix would you like to go with? Are there any changes that we might want to discuss? Policy action 1K in the draft plan establishes that interim 15% inclusionary. You know, what is the Goldilocks moment? Now, the 15%, we included that in the, in the draft because that was the city's policy prior to the current housing element. So this was a policy from 2013. That was eliminated when our arena went to five. So we went straight back to the same policy that we once had at 15%. We felt that that was a reasonable point for discussion, so we can, we can look at it a slightly higher or a different percentage. Again, a couple of the thoughts, any other thoughts on any of these percentages, we'd love to hear from you folks. Additionally, you know, we are going to be bringing back this item to the city council with a full update of the draft in July, you know, based upon the feedback that we get here tonight. We're also going to be doing, I'm going to go over the overall schedule, and we can kind of come back to those discussion points momentarily. So we're here at June 8th, you know, again, seeking some additional guidance. We're going to the community on June 21st for a virtual workshop, again, to share with the community what we're learning here today, get additional feedbacks, and Kim Lee Horan, the consultant, will prepare an updated version of the housing, we'll call it version three, if you will. We'll bring back, that back to the city council on July 13th. And again, this is still only a draft document. You know, the final document's not going to come forward to the city council until January of 2021, 2022, excuse me, after we go through the environmental review process and we take any feedback that we get from HCD. Again, there's that 60-day HCD review process built in here as well. So I just want to kind of reinforce that the guidance and the decisions that we might be making today are really, again, for a draft document. There'll be other opportunities later for the council and the community to provide further input and to come up with a final document. Yes, Chris?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Thank you. On the subject of the inclusionary, whether it's 10%, 15%, 20%, 25%, I don't know if any of us, maybe Will knows, all the variables, the calculus of what, what is the effect. Before we get too far forward, I think we should have really a specific, a study session dedicated to these kinds of decisions. I know I cannot sit here tonight and say whether it should be 25%, 30%. Just the variable factors of incentivizing affordable development, and what is the tipping point? What is the magic number? I don't know if we're capable of studying it, but I'd like to understand it better. Simone or Jim?
Thank you, Councilmember Dixon. So the, the policy document, it says it's just an interim number, so it's just a temporary number of 15%. I think we need to vet the, what is going to be the permanent inclusionary amount with the council, and it could be different in different parts of the city, and that'd be a separate and distinct ordinance. So the policy right now is just an interim, it's that temporary. What's that stopgap? The stopgap we're recommending for now is 15%. I do think that we need to, and that's only in interim, we need to come back and have that further dialogue with the council about, you know, what are, should it be higher, should it be lower, should it be progressive in different parts of the town?
Well, yeah, exactly. I think we should have dedicated two-hour discussion or more about it, or you should have individual sessions with us just to kind of go through various scenarios. May, Mr. Mayor, may I just ask you a couple more questions?
Yeah, we've got some folks in the queue here, but please, go ahead.
Oh, well, go ahead. All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil.
Yeah, I want to touch on a couple of points. Probably the first one is on the option two, when we're looking at a larger buffer and a higher rezone. Have we, was this the first time that folks from either Banning Ranch or from Coyote Canyon have seen kind of what the proposal is?
That's correct. It is the first time.
Yeah, okay. I think between now and then, it would be really helpful to go to them and just kind of say, look, generally speaking, what's feasible for you? My guess is this is going to be a little high for Coyote Canyon, the Coyote Canyon folks. Probably, the nice thing is, even if it's a little high, it's a lot higher than where we started.
Sure.
And so I just don't want to, I don't want to put a number out there that is unrealistic, and we know that we're going to have to come back down. It's just, that, that site is just such a weird site. And there, it's going to be pretty darn expensive to get access to it. And so I want to make sure we're at least close to what I think is, is going to be realistic. My guess is they're probably going to say, hey, we need a higher density instead of 50, it may be 60.
Okay.
Or, or, you know, I, we need more moderate and, but even if they said, hey, we need more moderate, unless low and very low, at that point, they're still way higher than where they were. But I just don't know where they are. But I think given that they're a sole property owner, we probably need to do that. And to the extent that we need to shift some, we can shift some into some, in a couple of other areas. I mean, we, we did greatly reduce the, the burden on the airport area and then into Newport Center area by shifting a lot more over, so, and, and also shifting a lot more into the ADUs. So I guess what I'm saying is you can kind of do, there, there is, there is a potential for a little bit of a hybrid between option one and option two. But I think given the, two of the areas in, of the five are sole owned. You can keep it here. It doesn't matter. What I'm saying is we, we're looking at, we're looking at six, I should say. We, we're looking at six areas. Two of them are owned by only one, I'm sorry, two of them are owned by two companies or two entities, however you want to phrase it. So I just want to make sure when we're talking, when, if we can have a direct dialogue with two property owners, which we can, probably worth just making sure that we're looking at something realistic and feasible so that we don't end up with, you know, a no net loss issue. The other one, can we go to the summary of options page? There you go. So when we're looking at the summary of options page and we're looking at surplus units, you know, one of the, one of the ways that we can ensure that we are reaching compliance without having this much surplus units is to make sure that when we're working through the, the overlays, that the overlays have, you know, finite limitations on them. And so, and that's probably, that's worth mentioning again, that that's part of the process and thought process here is this wouldn't quite apply for the two properties where they, where you're only looking at two, two property areas. But let's say you're looking at Newport Center, for example. If you put Newport Center and you had, I, I'm just throwing this out there because we have not sat down and figured this out yet. But let's say you had 10 overlays in Newport Center. You know, once a certain number of units are reached in one part of Newport Center, then it's over and that area is done and no more, no more units. And so that is what I call the micro overlay. And then kind of the macro overlay is that all of the micro overlays can be subject to hitting limits at the macro level as well. So I mean, if you have, if you've hit a certain number of very low affordable or moderate or something, well, no more moderate if we've hit a certain level on any of the micro ones. So what I'm saying is that we can do this in a more targeted approach once we get the overall approach planned out. So that, yes, the potential, the development potential is there if we just said, go. But realistically, we're not going to say, just go. We're going to be more targeted in our, in our approach on the housing overlays. So that, you know, we're doing everything we can to reach compliance without needing to come anywhere near these, you know, these buffers or, you know, the highest level of development over, development potential. I guess what I'm saying is the, our, our goal needs to be, you know, finding compliance, period, but not, you know, not getting to a point where finding compliance has caused an overrun of, of units all over the city. So that's the point of talking about the housing overlays. And, and one last comment on that. Because, you know, the housing overlay is going to be necessary simply because we did reach out to all of the property owners that had any, you know, realistic ability to redevelop. And we didn't come anywhere near this number in, in specific property owner redevelopment. So just because we're planning for it, and I keep coming back around to this, just because we planned for it, even if we approved something with a, you know, with a, a total development potential this high, does not mean that this is what actually gets approved or built in the next eight years. It just, because the city's not in the building industry.
Right. It's just the opportunity.
Yeah. And I want to, it's, this is, I don't think anyone up here is excited about any of this, but I want to point out that the effort that's being put into it. Yeah, I, I think realistically, what I'd like to see is just throwing this out there because I want to make this comment before public comments, so folks can tell me if I'm wrong or think differently. I would like to see a little bit more of an op, a hybrid between options one and two. I'd like to see the development potential brought down closer to option one, so less of a buffer, but still a buffer. I'd like to see us make sure that the owners at Banning Ranch and Coyote Canyon are at least comfortable or with a number. And, you know, get to something where they, they realistically find it feasible and let's call it a stretch goal on their part. Because I just don't want to build in a, I, I don't want to be in a situation where we are relying on them for an unrealistic number, an unfeasible number, I should say, and then find our no net loss buffer eaten up quickly just simply by two property owners. Thanks.
Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. So if we plan for extra units, it doesn't mean we're going to be building extra units, correct?
That's correct.
We don't see an indication that a nominal increase above and beyond the standard requirement is going to somehow be tricked by the state later on to be a real number.
We have no knowledge of that, no.
What we're hoping is that we submit these numbers, they don't say, oh, you're, you're submitting a little bit higher. We'll accept those higher numbers. That, that's our hope.
That's correct.
But do we expect other cities to do similar approach?
You know, we're finding that all, all cities are struggling with this. Majority of the cities we surveyed with our consultant that's working on it, they, they are kind of the same target of buffer. What we say that 17% area, I think that looks like to be the average. I think Coronado is the only city that's saying that we're going to have a zero buffer. I think they're taking a much more aggressive approach. But we're, we're finding that it's a struggle for all the, the communities.
So if we were to submit, for example, 15% or something close to one and two, as Councilman O'Neil said, and other cities do similar, then the city, if the state were to pull a fast one, they'd be pulling the fast one and all the other cities who did a.
That's correct.
Yeah. So that's the risk, but at the same time, I'm, I'm actually a little convinced since we last spoke that we have to do a buffer. Purely because we can't control the units that are submitted by an applicant. That's, that's their property. Whether they submit it or they ever get built is up to them. We don't own any property built and we're not in that business. So if we essentially allow some flexibility, we can preserve our plan if someone were to go below the numbers that we request for the area, correct?
Correct.
And preserving that plan, do we have to then update that plan? Or do we just have room, and again, we're simply planning for it and it doesn't actually get built, we just say, hey, our plan kept it intact. We move the unit somewhere else, but those units were never built.
That's correct. The, those buffer units stay in place until they're utilized. They no, actually get built unless we actually need it to close that gap between that, that planned affordability and what they actually submitted. And that's that gap that, that sits there.
But you say until we need it, but we don't really need it. We, we need a plan for it, but if, 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 if property owners don't come to us and they don't submit and they don't get built.
True.
There are no consequences.
That's correct.
So you say need, we need to incorporate them in our planning document. They don't actually need to be built, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. So I just want to clarify because that word might scare a couple people, some people. But what you mean is need it for the planning element only?
Correct.
Not to actually get built.
We don't build it.
So if someone were to be afraid, for example, of how many actual low-income units are going to be built in our city, they would want there to be a little bit of buffer because that buffer allows a flexibility without them actually ever being built.
That's correct.
That's correct. Okay, great. And so, you know, with that in mind, I'm comfortable with the staff recommendation now that I understand the buffer more. The buffer is in the planning, not the actual building. And if someone in fact has a problem with too many low-income housing units being built because maybe they think it's poor economics like I do, not because of perhaps who comes, but because it doesn't make economic sense for the builders, then we don't have to worry necessarily about upsetting them with a buffer because it allows our plan to stay intact, gives us flexibility, and perhaps in the end means that there's less of a mandate enforced on how many low-income housing or other units are built.
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
Simone, I have a question about why we would be proposing a 15% inclusionary's policy when for-profit developers have told us that they can do 60, 40. And they, and they tell us that because of the land cost and everything, but that they could still do that and make a profit because the higher rents are going to be much higher. So why would we be proposing a 15% instead of a 40%?
That, thank you, Councilmember Brenner. That 15% is just the, the interim. It's just what we're going to do. It's our recommendation to do just a 15% out the gate. We still need, and so that 15 is in place while we figure out what's going to be our permanent inclusionary, and it could be higher. And it's that discussion that Councilmember Dixon brought up is that we need to have that conversation with the council, with the community. Do we go from a 15% up to a 20%? Is airport area going to be a 25% and Newport Center going to be 15? Those are unanswered questions. That 15% that's in the policy, that's just the interim. That's what, just what we do out, out the gate.
Interim for how long? I mean, when can we have this discussion?
So I think we, we're obligated to get an interim in place in six months and then our permanent in three years.
Can't we have this discussion that Councilmember Dixon asked for sooner rather than later so that we can actually delve into this? I'd rather have that discussion before we start publicizing 15%.
What, it's the, it's whatever the council would like for us to do.
Okay. And then my other question, on the buffer, I'm still, I, I'm still uncertain about that. It seems to me, once something is published, there's much more likelihood that it's going to be done. And I'm wondering why we don't go with a low buffer number, but have, what's the difference between if we have a low buffer number, but we've got a list of the buffer is in our pocket, but we don't publicize it so that when we have to add numbers, we can do so relatively easily, but we haven't put it out there and said for everyone to see?
I, I think our struggle, our challenge is, is getting HCD to kind of buy off on it. I mean, I think that's, that's their biggest, everything right now we're focusing on is HCD. That's, that's our goal is to be compliant. And what we don't want is that we don't want to, from a staff standpoint, we don't want to shortchange ourselves with just a, a 5% buffer, buffer, because we don't think that's going to work for us going forward with some of these potential development projects. I mean, there are not many. I mean, we know Coyote Canyon, we know maybe a little bit of the airport, maybe a little bit of Newport Center. Already just on one project, we'll run out of buffer and then we're stuck looking for another site to rezone and doing this exercise all again. So that's why we have concerns about that 5%.
Okay. The other question is on Banning Ranch, have we reached out to the conservancy and, and expressed our desire to come up with some sort of a compromise or a collaboration or something that would be sort of a win-win for all of us? I don't think our citizens realize that if we have no housing at Banning Ranch, that means we've got much more housing in our congested areas. So I'm wondering if we have gone to them and talked through this and said, you know, maybe there's a project that you would really like that we could do where it's, I don't know, seniors that are going to work on Banning Ranch or, or something.
I, I have not spoken to the conservancy of recent. We've spoken to the conservancy folks in the past and they weren't really receptive to any type of housing opportunity. Maybe that's changed, but we have not reached out to them of, of recent.
Okay. And one other thing on ADUs. When you came out and looked at my bachelor apartment, you said everything was compliant except for the foundation because it's an old home. It was built in, I don't know, the 40s or something. Is there a way around that for us so that people who have existing studio apartments can count toward our ADUs? Is there anything we as a council can do or?
We, we're still exploring. It's, it's really based on state law. So it's that health and safety code. So it's the building code and the fire code. So if we're, if the city is going to go ahead and permit an ADU from an existing, quote, we'll say illegal, then it says the city is saying it's safety occupied, meeting current code. And so to meet current code, it's, it's restrictive. It's a little harder to do. It's not to say it's impossible, but it just costs money to the property owner. So we haven't found a solution yet. We're still kind of exploring that. And it's really at the state level, providing some latitude from the state to say you can have some allowances to not meet all the building code requirements. And the council could not adopt a less restrictive standard than what the state has already adopted. And so we have the adopted building code. You couldn't say have a, a, a less of a building code. The city couldn't do that. And so that's why we're stuck with what the state has given us from a, from a, from a, from a design aspect and code compliance.
I remember when we built the second story on our home, we had to do metal straps from the home to the foundation to make sure that it didn't shift in an earthquake. So perhaps there are some modifying methods that we could.
It, it doesn't preclude from a property owner from, from going through the process. The only thing that may happen is they may have to tear out drywall, add more straps, as you've, you've mentioned, more nails, more anchorage. So those are, those little things that add up to the cost. So there's absolutely ways, ways to legalize these units. We're not saying you can't. We're just saying it's just expensive to do sometimes. And without an architect doing the inspection and trying to find out what you have and what you don't have.
Okay. I'd certainly like to encourage any ways that we could make those illegal units legal so that we can count them, because I think there's quite a few of them in our community.
Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you for bringing it back. I like that idea, Councilwoman Joy. I wish we could just hide some units and present it later. It's worth looking into. Simone, some of the numbers that were glossed over at the beginning, it looked like it had 60 above moderate and 40 affordable. Except for one area of question, which is kind of a concern for me is the airport area. Like that was given 45 above moderate and 55% affordable. I'm just worried about
Yeah, I do too.
equitable results at the end of this, especially considering we're going to have some flexibility with this buffer you're asking for.
It was, was it, um, Councilmember Muldoon, was it option two or was it option one? Do you remember?
Uh, was it based on the options or was it, let's see. Let me see if I can find it really quickly. I don't know if Will is maybe tracking with that too. Were you tracking with that, Councilman O'Neil?
So.
Was it one? Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to option one. This is, this was what the council directed us to do from the last study session.
Oh, thank you. Yes. It was one of the specific options. And which, which correlates with the 5%. So this would be fixed if we allowed more buffer.
Correct. The, the only concern for this option is that we have such a limited buffer. And if there was a project, just one project, say Coyote Canyon, that would just wipe up our, our buffer completely. And there'd be no, no further buffer in town. And so the burden comes back on the city. So we have to go find opportunity sites and rezone sites. And we only have six months to do it. Right? And so I have to go through this exercise again, and, and then I, I need to find a property owner that, that's going to be receptive to say, we're going to put an overlay of housing on your property. Not every property owner is receptive to that.
Okay, but for the sake of dealing with an inequitable result in the airport area, that gets corrected with the other options.
Correct. So if the council would like us to find that in between, between option one and option two, and this can get adjusted upwards in the airport area.
Perfect. Okay. Yeah, that'd be another reason why I would support up in the buffer.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah. Can I follow, I, I know, can I follow up just on that? So, so to Mr. Muldoon's point, that, I know I spent a lot of time in the weeds when I was going through. That's exactly, that's basically what I was trying to, to get to, and I appreciate that. My, what I was, what I was saying in our fleet was the idea that if we found a, an area between one and two, where we had a, a higher buffer, buffer than one, lower buffer than two, probably still high single digits. I know that makes you uncomfortable, but I'm saying, assuming just for a moment, we're higher single digits. If you're there, you would still be able to go back to talk to the, the single property owners. And if you did that, then, and they, they said, look, it's unfeasible for us, but we're, here's our stretch goal for what we could probably do. You would then probably see some areas, in particular, the airport area, Newport Center, absorb some of those. So you would still see higher numbers than option one. But, but you'd, but they'd be lower than option two. You'd just see a hybrid, but you would, but, but at that point, we'd still be in that, that neighborhood. But that's what I wanted to make sure I was trying to explain.
So if, if, just in theory, again, if the, those affordable units come down in Coyote Canyon, in theory, we got to put them somewhere.
Right.
They're going to go, if they go in an airport, probably spread out airport area, Newport Center. So those numbers will, will get a little bit inflated to counteract that.
I agree with that statement, but that's, that's what I was trying to explain. So anyway, to your, to your point, Mr. Muldoon, I agree with it.
Ms. Dixon.
Thank you. A couple of questions just to kind of go back over this, but just to continue what we're talking about.
we're talking about with these. Looking at this slide, you have a... Is HCD going to be holding us accountable to match these percentages in every area? I mean, we as a city can be, as you say, we take a little from here, where somebody's going to do this much over here in Coyote Canyon, that means it's going to push elsewhere. Do you envision, Mr. George has said, as a city, and you're going to be on the front lines with us and working with the developers? I mean, we want to encourage developers to build a affordable, quality of affordable units, homes, apartments in our community. Some developers are more willing than others, and they're in the business of getting the financing to build the market rate as well as affordable. So there may be other developers who really, instead of fighting with us or resisting, I mean, we all, every developer in the state is going to be under the gun to work with cities to accommodate these requirements. We are obviously not unique. Do you envision that there's going to be some horse trading between these areas of our city? I mean, it stands to reason that if somebody's not going to work with the city to help us accomplish and to meet our state mandated goals, that we want a little cooperation. Don't we have those kinds of conversations?
The... Thank you, Councilmember Dixon. So the challenge for this housing cycle is that we have to identify these parcels. And so every parcel that is going to be a housing opportunity has an APN number, and they're going to have the potential to build out up to kind of these levels or even further. If there's an affordable housing developer that wants to come in and do 100% affordable, no one's stopping that opportunity. And we've talked about if a housing developer comes in and builds less than what you see on the screen, that's where the challenge becomes for the city, where we just need that buffer to help support that housing opportunity. Again, this is just a plan that provides the maximum opportunity at all income levels. If somebody comes in with less, that's great, but we have to have that plan to work. And hence, that's what we talk about, that buffer. So I'm not exactly sure if there's any opportunity, Councilmember Dixon, for any type of horse trading between parcels. I think we need to look at what the parcel represents because we have to list that in an actual document and categorize.
All right. Would you anticipate that when a plan comes in and it's less than what we have suggested or we have planned for in our document, we say, you must comply? I mean, we have to comply. I guess they could, if it doesn't pencil out, I respect it's America, they can go elsewhere. But I don't see as why we would keep pushing this around the city. We have identified areas of the city, and we could still continue to play with the formulas, which I agree with in the prior conversation. But I think as a city, we have to decide, or maybe there's incentives that we are going to need to talk about because we need developers, and there are developers in our Southern California community that are willing to do this, but it's going to defeat our whole purpose to have a plan. So I guess my point is, are these numbers fungible by district?
Well, these are, these numbers are not fungible by district, no.
Okay. Then we really have to hold fast. If a party is going to come forward with a proposed development, we need to get to these numbers because it forces us into this buffer zone that is certainly undesirable for everyone. Another fundamental question I want to ask about the buffer, and we all agree to keep the buffer as low as possible, but that's what I'm trying to address to get, to force these plans to come through so we don't have to exhaust our buffers. But at the end of the day, no matter what our buffer is, we still have to deliver, what is the number, 49, 50 housing units, affordable housing units and other units? Is that correct?
Well, we have to, we'll have to plan and give the opportunity to develop that high arena number. And I think what you're getting to, Councilmember Dixon, is really that inclusionary ordinance that we mentioned in the early part of the meeting and having that further discussion because that's really what's going to drive that level of affordability. If we want to hold developers' feet to the fire, then it's going to have to be that discussion on the inclusionary side.
I guess you're right. Okay. So I hope that's an action item takeaway that we agree with tonight, that we really have to have, that all hands on deck, understanding of what the calculus is on different percentages and expectations. One other question, back to ADUs. You've said on a number of occasions that HCD is not going to accept 1,000 ADUs. Have they said so?
I'll turn to Mr. Campbell for the conversation.
We indicated that the 1,500 number would not be supported by HCD. We have had conversations with HCD about 1,000 units, and they were very skeptical of even 1,000 units. They would definitely want us to have a very robust set of policies and incentives so that we achieve that goal. And so that's what the next draft of the housing element will include, you know, additional incentives, additional programs, that we're going to have to really go out there and be proactive and try to solicit people to put forward these projects.
Well, I would think we would, absolutely. And it's doable. And back to Councilmember Brenner's comment about the units in Corona Del Mar, related to determine how many of those are in compliance or could satisfy the ADU standard. I think we should really work hard to do it. I know you already are, and you're thinking of that, and we've talked about some incentives. We've just already waived some permit fees, et cetera. But if HCD is questioning our ability to encourage the community to build ADUs, I would still stick with 1,000 ADUs just because we'll do it. We'll fuck your way to incentivize or do whatever we need to do because that should qualify and help us meet our numbers.
And for, just for the council's benefit, we are planning for 1,000 ADUs in the housing element. And we are, in the back of the scene here, we are developing a robust plan with standard plans, websites, marketing materials. So it just takes us time to put all that together.
I know, and I really appreciate all the hard work you are doing, and nobody has been through this before, and I do appreciate. Some cities are really not, they're a year behind what we're doing, and you probably are getting fielding calls from other cities because we're so far ahead. Well, anyway, thank you. That's all. Thanks.
Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. Simone, what is it? Sorry, I'm not privy to a lot of this stuff, but low, very low income. What is the hourly wage of... Is that how they do it?
Right. So it is based on a family of four, and it's the average of the county, not Newport Beach, the county. And so that average, median income, the middle, is $100,000. The very low is 50% of that. So it's a $50,000 a year family for a family of four. And there's progressive tiers above that. So your moderate is $100,000.
But low, very low. So I see in my district, we have hundreds of low, very low. Well, maybe I'm not reading it right. It's 600, next one's 193, and then there's 39, and there's... So there's only 600 people making 50 grand in one spot?
No, no. This is just, this is going to be, these are housing units, and the state is saying you have to plan and have to have available housing units for people making $50,000 a year. And so that's what this plan is going to be.
No, but you're telling me that in airport area, maybe I'm not reading it right. You've got 617 in the airport area.
That we're going to have a plan for.
Yeah. Okay. So everywhere else, we've got hundreds more than anywhere else. So you're just hoping they never get built because you're going to create a pretty odd neighborhood?
And that's the challenge, Councilmember Duffield, is that...
Why are you doing it to this district? Because it's easier? Just tell me, what is the incentive to put it all in the airport area?
I don't think it's, it's not all of the housing units are affordable.
It's the lion's share, 600. Should I read these numbers?
There is quite a bit of housing units that are going to be planned for the airport area, but also there's plans for Newport Center, Coyote Canyon, and Banning Ranch. We just have a hard time, where do we put these housing units?
Wait, the rents in New... The rents in Fashion Island are extraordinary.
Right.
So those people are not anywhere near what the income of this area... You're just creating, it looks to me like the airport's going to be the dumping zone for these folks in this scenario. Instead of spreading it out, you're just putting it all in this one place. Anyway, thanks.
Mr. Blom.
Thank you. So the process is just what I want to talk about real quick. And so we're looking at a baseline. Is that essentially what we're trying to put forth, something where we can get some kind of conversation back from HCD so we know what we're... They're not just going to approve this, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. I didn't think so. So we're just trying to find out kind of the beginning of a negotiation. Is that a fair assumption, kind of what we're...
Well, they're obligated to provide us the feedback.
Great. So this initial plan, we know will not be accepted, but we're trying to get as much as we can out of this initial plan and have as few corrections coming back from it.
That's correct.
Okay. So, all right, well, that's, I think that's a great point to start, and I think that's important for everyone to understand, that this is not about, we're trying to finalize individual housing all throughout this city and force this down anyone's throat. We're just trying to get kind of a baseline to start this negotiation with. Okay, wonderful. The only other two things that strike me, and I think they touched upon them with single land ownership when we talk about Coyote Canyon and Banning Ranch, but what strikes me the most about those areas is a lack of immediate infrastructure. And that cost, I can only imagine, would be taken on by the individual land owner in those areas. So in order for us to build up these areas, it's going to take a fairly ridiculous investment of infrastructure to start getting things going over there. Is that a fair assessment?
Correct.
Okay. And so when we start talking about inclusionary percentages and we're asking for the pro forma of a future development, which is kind of what the idea is, right? We're acting like the board here. We want to see what they think they can make on each one. We're willing to take a smaller margin. The city's willing to kind of negotiate with you guys. When we start getting into percentages beyond that 15% as an inclusionary measure, I get really nervous that we start striking positive developers for this city, and we start looking for, as we've said, 100% all affordable developers. And then I think that goes to Mr. Duffield's point, that we're creating areas of the city that we, I think has been the largest deterrent for everyone talking about the housing element, what we don't want to do. I've said this before too. I don't think that when we start talking about affordability and what we call it very low and low is necessarily what we're doing. Sometimes I think that we've lost the idea of what that term means, and I've said this over and over again. When my son comes home from college, I'd like him to be able to live in Newport, but he'll be living in a very low to even super lower than these option. So some of those places, I don't think are necessarily a negative if they are spread out throughout the city at the best possible approach. And so if what we're looking for right now is building a baseline, then I think we're looking at a great, great road. And I really appreciate the staff's second option. You know, I don't want a larger buffer. Clearly, I'm always down to negotiate for something in between, and I think that's probably what we're all willing to do. And so I would definitely be willing to look at closer to option two with the buffer range so that you guys feel more comfortable, so that we can see somewhere where that baseline comes back from HCD. Because, you know, it's all fine and dandy what we do up here, but if we're fighting every single one of our options and every single one of our districts and every single percentage, it just, it basically takes us back to zero, and we have to do all this over. So I would like to see some wins out of this negotiation. So I am good with option two. I clearly don't like any of it. You know, I think our growth needs to be always guided by the principles the country was founded on, that capitalism drives us and we build where we want to build, and we do it for the good of the community, not just because we're being forced. But in this, I'm willing to start these negotiations. I don't really like the affordability numbers being so high. I think that really puts a huge problem on our developers and kind of what we're trying to do. I think if there's creative solutions, everyone would prefer that, but at this point, let's kind of see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comment? I think Mr. Blom made some really good points. And ultimately, the markets just, you know, this is kind of keeping us occupied while this very large truck is going to run through our town over a period of 10 years. And the developers are, we're going to sit there and, you know, added infrastructure. And these, when we talk about housing, I think some people think house, and they think there's houses, but none of it, virtually none of it is owner occupied. Is that correct, do you think?
You know, it's not owner occupied or not. I think with these densities, it's all going to be for rent product.
Right.
I think the majority will be for rent.
Yeah. And there's issues of just creating places where people will want to live.
True.
Where they could raise a family, which means open space and amenities and all the rest of it. And obviously, that is a balancing act that a developer has to figure out as well.
Correct.
So it's really, I think it's just an extremely challenging position we're in to kind of get good product that represents our city well, that people will be happy living in. And certainly, the airport area is less than desirable, you know, for all the reasons that we know. But still, when people don't have options, you know, they'll take it. But I just, a question I had was, if you're a developer and you're, is it better to be first in when you're coming to Newport Beach looking for projects? Does the tank get empty toward the end?
I think there's that potential. I think you'd rather be first in, but again, with a housing element, we still need to update the land use element. So it can't be too early. It'd be better just to kind of wait it out and let the city adopt their, update the land use element, the general plan and zoning. And I think you'd want to wait for that to be done.
We've got a long way to go.
Correct.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Duffield.
So the thing that bugs me is that Coyote Canyon is so far away from happening, it's crazy. And Banning Ranch, it is, it's not happening. Those two places, while they're great, they're not happening. The airport is happening. That's happening. We're building now apartments there and housing right now. These other two places, Coyote Canyon doesn't even have a road. They don't even, it's a dream. So if this all goes forward, the dumping area for all this affordable is going to be in the place that is happening, that there are places that are building, that, you know, you look at Coyote and Banning, it just really is disturbing because I'm watching this, my district, being, going through construction right now, and these other places are dreams. So I don't think that's too fair.
Any other comments from council? All right. We'll go ahead and get public comments on... Well, Steph, do you have direction? Do you feel?
Yeah. Sorry. Yes, we do have direction. Thank you. Public comments on agenda, non-agenda items this time.
You're going to need to take public comment on this item.
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Gross, excuse me, sorry. Good evening, Mayor, council. I'm back with an update from Supervisor Foley's office. My name is Avery Counts. I cover Newport Beach for the office. I'm very happy to do so. I love this city. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this update on the work Supervisor Foley's doing for Newport Beach. Today, she had the board meeting going over the county budget. She was advocating for District Two cities, such as Newport Beach, to get funding for her priorities, including homelessness and the environment. We also, I'm sorry, excuse me. We also want to invite you all, to all Newport Beach residents, to join our upcoming events on June 16th at 12:00 p.m. We've got a Second District Virtual Small Business Roundtable focusing on staffing restaurants this Friday at 7:30 p.m. at the lake behind the Avenue of the Arts Hotel in Costa Mesa. We're going to have a COVID memorial. The public's invited. You're all going to be invited as well. I'll send you emails tonight. Mayor Avery, I already sent you yours. Then on June 23rd, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m., employers and job seekers alike are invited to join our Second District Virtual Job Fair. Thank you again for your time, and please feel free to contact our office if there's anything we can do to be of assistance. You can email me directly at avery counts at o c gov dot com. Avery spelled just like the mayor. Or call 714-559-8364. Have a great night.
Thank you.
And just to re emphasize, this is a chance for people to comment on the housing element if anyone has any comments.
Good evening. I feel kind of like the elephant in the room. My name is Carol Lind. I live at 6607 Seashore Drive. And I'm on, I'm a board member of the Banning Ranch Conservancy. And no, we haven't been talked to. I am here, the Banning Ranch Conservancy, as you all may know, is a local nonprofit organization with the mission of conserving the Banning Ranch as permanent public open space park and coastal nature preserve. I'm here to read the letter that our president has written to the city. And this is in respect, he's writing in respect for, concerning the city's attempts to meet the regional housing needs allocation numbers. And it focuses on Banning Ranch, obviously. The city has prioritized the preservation of the entire Banning Ranch property as open space as described in the Land Use Policy 3.4 in the 2006 General Plan Amendment. It reads, prioritize the acquisition of Banning Ranch as an open space amenity for the community and region, consolidating oil operations, enhancing wetland and other habitats, and providing parkland amenities to serve nearby neighborhoods. The last two years has been a tremendous, we have seen tremendous progress towards the acquisition and preservation of the Banning Ranch property, including the incredibly generous $50 million donation of Frank and Joanne Randall. That gift, combined with the option agreement to acquire the property, negotiated between the landowners and the National Conservation Nonprofit, the Trust for Public Land, along with very promising efforts to secure the remaining funds needed to purchase the property, have finally brought us to, us all to the doorstep of this decades-long regional goal as captured in Newport Beach's Land Use Policy, LU 3.4. It is realistic now to expect an escrow closing date in 2022, next year. This is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to preserve the largest parcel of unprotected coastal open space remaining in Southern California. And we encourage the entire community to continue to rally and offer whatever help they can, can to get across the finish line. We respectfully encourage the city of Newport Beach to look at locations other than the Banning Ranch to meet its RINAs goals. Sincerely, Terry Welsh, President of the Banning Ranch Conservancy. And I would like to say, we do realize you are in an impossible situation with this, these numbers that have been dictated to you. But we also want to remind you that we are currently, there is currently an arm-length real estate transaction in process and a closing date anticipated next year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comment?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deborah Allen, I'm the president of the Harborview Hills Community Association across the street. You, you all know that one of the things that we're very concerned about is the site plan ordinance. I'm not going to tell you again because I sound like a broken record. But I do have a couple of, what, what I hope are, are simple suggestions. When you, when your, when your consultant comes back with the revised housing element draft for, I think it's the 30th of June for a council study session on July 13th. If there's going to be revisions to the, it's the table of sites analysis, and I imagine there are because the numbers are somewhat different. If you could provide some kind of a redline version for those of us who have read it and made notes on the existing draft, so we know what's been changed because then we'd be able to have more focused comments. And then talking about the, the idea of keeping the buffer low. If this is just a first-stage negotiation going to the state, then perhaps that would be a reason to keep that buffer low. Go in with your, go in with things that they can then push you to make higher rather than going in with what you honestly think is feasible and they're going to want to negotiate up from there. And then lastly, on the, on the issue of the, what do you call it? The inclusionary zoning. I think it would be very helpful to the public because there'll be details in that that are not available in the housing element, to have a, a study session on that subject sooner rather than later because perhaps we will understand better what this looks like because, you know, eight or 9,000 dwelling units in a city of 45,000 units is, is, is crazy. But perhaps we'd have a better idea if we could see that inclusionary zoning, at least discussion start early on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comment on the review of the draft housing element?
Thank you. Good afternoon, almost evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. What I brought for you today is, based on the documentation that was available earlier today, it is not the same presentation that you saw. There were some minor changes to it. So I've made comments. My name's Nancy Scarborough, sorry. And I am a member of the Good Neighbors Committee and I have been following this for two years. So, excuse me if you've heard some of this before. But I have comments on some of these slides. And I'd like to walk through just briefly a couple of these. On slide 13, which I've only given you the pages that have comments. On slide 13, question number six, in response to that. We would encourage you to instruct staff to write policies to support 1,580Us. That's a great starting point. We are negotiating with HCD and we should be giving them something to push back against. So why would we show our hand at the beginning of the poker game? Question number seven, allowing the HCD to, where am I here? Staff does not believe the HCD will accept the higher number based on the city's past performance. Why would we not just try for the, regarding the ADUs? We should start, I think we should start at 1,500. Question number eight, what if we fall short of the construction of ADUs? We have a couple of years to find out how that's going to go. People are just now learning about it. It's a good place to start and give us ourselves a little bit of time to figure that out. On page 16, slide 16. We would encourage you to push back the July 23rd date to the latest date possible for submitting. We want to be in the rush of things so that there's not a lot of individual attention given to Newport Beach. We should be among a whole bunch of cities asking for things and not singled out on our own. Slide number 17. Any changes to the density? Developers are already getting a 50% density bonus. So giving them more density bonus than 50%, I don't agree with as a starting point. Changes to the buffer, they are high and maybe they're not likely in Banning Ranch and Coyote Canyon. So we, I, we would encourage a low buffer number. Also, on the policy action 1K, which establishes the 15% inclusionary requirement. That's what Councilman Brenner mentioned before. Why not start at 40% and work back from that? I think once we give the inclusionary numbers to HCD, we're, we're giving them something that we will not be able to, to take back. And I agree also with additional study sessions and information for the public as well on inclusionary zoning and the overlays. We all need a lot more. I, we have lots of questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on the draft housing element? Anything on Zoom? We have one? Please go ahead.
Ms. Kraus, oh, there you go.
Sorry, Brad, or Mayor.
Go ahead, Dorothy. Please turn off, mute your device.
I'm sorry, Mayor Avery. I, I thought I lowered my hand, but I raised it. So I, staff answered my questions and between Nancy and Carol, my other comments were covered. Thank you. I apologize.
No need to do that and thank you for calling in. Any other public comment on the housing element? All right. And did we have any other public comment on non-agenda items? Or agenda items? Seeing none? I'm sorry? Oh, Mr. Muldoon, please go ahead.
Thank you. Just to clarify a couple of things, Simone. Although we're, we're requesting for the ADUs to be higher, it's not necessarily a negotiation in that they're either going to say yes or no, or is it a negotiation?
And, you know, I, I think in this particular case, I'm going to say, I, I don't know. I, I can turn to, we have a consultant sitting in the back row. If we can see what their thoughts are. But usually, they just provide a bunch of comments and it's not that, you, you need to satisfy these comments. Right? It's like when you submit for plan check, you get to submit all the requirements of the, the city. We have to, we have to comply with all the HCD requirements. We haven't gone through this such an extensive exercise with HCD before because of all the new laws and changes. I, I don't think my gut feelings tell me it's not a negotiation.
Well, yeah, I, I don't feel like it's a negotiation either. But I, I do agree, we should maybe keep trying for 15-ish, getting 1,000. Something between that number would be good.
Okay.
What are the numbers that were mandated again, for those in the audience, to plan for?
It's 4,845.
Okay. And that is an equation that's given uniformly without preference, except for a couple of areas in Central Coast, that every city has based on their numbers.
That's correct.
So it's not really, that, that number is not negotiable.
We're done.
And, and, and we've appealed it.
That's correct.
So that, let's call that number the floor. That floor again is how many?
4,845.
Okay, 4,845. That is a floor. If we submit a buffer, we are not asking them to change the equation, nor are we asking them to give us more on the floor. We're asking them for flexibility because the floor might not be planned for adequately if the applicants, the, the developers do not submit the numbers the way we want them to come out, correct?
Correct.
So I want that to be clear. If, if, if we're saying, hey, you know, we got this 4,000-ish buffer and we're going to add our floor, we're going to add some more as a buffer. We're not saying we want to build those more.
That's correct.
And, and nothing indicates that they're going to change the equation that's applied to every city for its, its likewise floor.
Correct.
So, you know, the, the buffer is interesting. The buffer, if you don't understand it, you're thinking, oh, you, you know, we're saying we can build more. No, we're not saying we can build more. We're saying that we have to plan for these different amounts because people are going to be submitting different numbers from what we hope they submit.
Correct.
Now, I want to go back to a colleague of mine concerned in his district, Councilfield, Councilman Duffield's concern. How, how do we alleviate that issue? Because I, I don't want to see the airport area be essentially treated differently from the other areas. And, and I actually would prefer, it probably is not possible at this stage, an at-large bucket. Because there are going to be people who show up, who have a plan for a parcel we never considered, like we saw in the restaurants over on Bristol that became the senior housing. You know, do we have an at-large bucket? And, and if it's not possible, I understand. And how do we address Councilman Duffield's concerns?
So addressing Councilmember Duffield's concerns, you know, we have a sites inventory. So we're looking at the option one. We've looked at 165 acres in the airport area where we look at Coyote Canyon's only 22 acres. So just that alone, there's just more acreage of opportunity in the airport area. You're looking at 165 acres. There's not, unless the council directs staff differently, we're not looking at any other sites. We're not looking at the peninsula or the islands or Corona del Mar to dump these housing units. If that's the council's preference, we can absolutely do that. But we worked with your housing committee to select these sites. And this, this is the best, these are the sites that the housing committee has come up with. With regards to the total affordability, we can definitely look at reducing that percentage of affordable units down in the airport area, but we got to put them somewhere else. Either we're going to put them in Coyote Canyon or we're going to put them in Newport Center. They have to go somewhere. You know, you squeeze the balloon on one side, it's going to expand on the other side. We're just, we're constrained on where we're going to put these affordable housing units. So we're, from a staff standpoint, we're happy to follow council's direction. Just, you know, but we're going to need to understand where the council wants us to put these housing units because we're stuck. We're, there's not a lot of places to put these housing units.
And so I, I appreciate that. I still agree with Councilman Duffield that, that doesn't mean that one area should have a higher percentage, even though they, they have a higher.
Area.
Area square foot. It doesn't reflect necessarily the market. I mean, the airport area is, is going to be different from any other area. But how about, do we have a, a, an at-large bucket? Or have any cities explored doing something like that? Because we can't control who's going to come, who's going to come forward and there's going to be a creative location we're not thinking about that they're going to say, like they did the old museum house, where they put the, the senior center there. I think something like that could happen. Why are we having to commit so stringently to geographic region having these numbers?
This is really goes back to two years prior where we did the listen and learn in each council member's district. And the, and the community selected these particular areas of where to put the housing units. And we took those, that charrette, those Lego blocks to the housing committee and they continued to refine those areas. So that's kind of the, the two-year process of how we got here. What we can do is relook at the airport area, see if we could reduce that affordability down, reduce those affordable units down a little bit and put them somewhere else. And I think what we can do is maybe boost the density even higher. So our maximum density here is 50 units per acre. And so that's a, that's an uptown project. So when we go to 60, 75, we're starting to get into that high-rise level. So I just want to preface that, that we can definitely look at the density, making these densities bigger so we can reduce that affordability a little bit. But again, you're going to start looking at bigger and bigger projects because that density starts to creep up. So we can definitely go back and look at that airport area.
Now, there are some areas, and I'm, I'm almost done because I see headaches being created as we speak. There are some areas where no one's going to come forward with anything anywhere, which is not going to happen because of the layout of the land. But we can tell the state, we're planning for areas to be built here. And if, if a landlord doesn't want to take advantage of the opportunity, well, that's fine. Quite frankly, we don't want to build for 1,000 units. We want to let the market decide. So I also don't know why we can't get a little creative. You know, sometimes engineers and planners want everything to be, you know, every little thing.
Exactly.
To be, to be exact. But the state's given us, you know, what I would submit is an impossible and impractical task. And I don't know why, other than acting in good faith, we should be running the errands for them. So that's just my thoughts. Thank you.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yeah, the, coming back around, I, the reason that the Housing Element Update Committee had broken it down into areas was because each area is totally different. I mean, you can't realistically expect the port streets, for example, to have someone purchase, you know, an acre of port streets homes and then turn it into, into, you know, new housing. It's, but whereas if you, you could realistically see someone purchase a fairly large plot of land, in fact, we have repeatedly over the last 10 years up in the airport area and then turn it into housing or a mixed-use development or something along those lines. And what they've also, what also happened when our Housing Element Update Committee was going through and looking at the airport area in particular was that they saw a lot of, you know, one-story commercial where, you know, in theory, you could see four or five-story mixed-use where you kept the commercial on the bottom but added three or four stories of housing on top. And we've seen actually proposals already coming our direction from that. So, you know, when we started the process, we didn't even have Coyote Canyon as a, as a viable option we do now. And so that, that certainly has taken quite a bit of strain off of the area that we would consider to be the airport area. And the thing about the density, I mean, we can't do high-rise in, in the airport area because of ALLOC and because of FAA and because of all the other restrictions. So we aren't, I don't think we are saying. That was a really weird alarm. That was, that was, that sounded bizarre. Anyway, for folks at home, we've got the doors open and a fire truck going by. So the, what I, what I'm saying though is, the density gets eventually constrained by the site plan. The sites are totally different all across our city just because that's how it is. And, and so the, the goal is not to try to pack one area. It was just simply looking at the, the various geographies of, of the area. And look, I mean, the, these numbers are substantially lower in the airport area than they were in the first go-around also. And I, I think that's a credit to the, to the efforts made by this. And I think that's a credit to the, to the efforts made by this, the council and the committee and what, and, and discussions out in the community. So I don't, I don't want to suggest for a moment that people were trying to pile on into the airport area. I just want to make sure that we were explaining the thought process there. Because, and I agree with Mr. Muldoon, there is always going to be the option. I mean, someone will figure out how to do that. The thing is there aren't really all that many Kittyama sites in areas throughout, you know, Corona Del Mar or Newport Coast or the peninsula and, you know, other areas like that where we'd be able to convert them over. And any site that we thought could be like a Kittyama site where you take Kittyama and then turn it into senior living, we sent letters to those people and asked them to commit and they declined. And either people responded or they didn't respond, but most people didn't respond. And so that's kind of what we're stuck with trying to figure this out. So anyway, I, I still come back around to, pardon me, I still come back around to, I think we ought to try to find the, the medium spot between options one and two. Go back and talk with the folks at Banning and also the folks at Coyote Canyon. Ask them, you know, for that stretch goal included in there. Take that, to your balloon analogy, take whatever, if they stay, we just, we're not, we're going to build zero if you put this on us. Find that stretch goal, squeeze the balloon a little bit somewhere, put it into the, some of the other areas. I don't anticipate that being a lot, but we'll probably need to put it into some of the other areas. And then I, I think at this point, we, you know, let's go out of the public, talk more, bring it back to us eventually and see about submitting. Because, yeah, I do think that we're going to have negotiation. I also think that we're going to find that HCD doesn't like some of these numbers and we'll push back and we'll have to have those discussions. As far as the inclusionary zoning, I just want to go to that last slide where we're talking about the inclusionary zoning issue. I don't know the answer to that either, whether 15% makes sense. I think, I, I do understand why, I do understand using our prior numbers, our prior baseline is kind of the potential makes sense. I also know that the, you know, let me pull it up. I also know that the, when La Habra was looking at their inclusionary zoning ordinance, they received quite a bit of discussion from, you know, BIA and whatnot. And so it'd be, I agree with Ms. Dixon that we ought to bring this back and have a discussion on inclusionary zoning ordinances, preferably before we send this out. I know that, that puts a pretty tight window. I know that. So probably sometime in the next few meetings unfortunately. But, but it is important and it's something we'll have to probably, we will need to work through. And given the, given the way that I've seen them discuss inclusionary zoning ordinances, I would recommend that BIA be invited to that discussion as well. Thanks.
Mr. Duffield.
Thanks. One element I'd like to bring up, the fact is that these low, very low-income projects that we're specifying out there at the airport will get built. Why is that? That's because there are developers out there who specialize in this. They know the bonds, the grants, they know the monies that they can go out and get to do it. So you're going to take 600-plus units, put them in one little spot in our city, and you just said it was a big spot. Well, it's not that big. In the big picture of things, those 600 units are going to affect all the property values around that area to the point where you're going to see properties devalued. That's just, this is going to be the way it is. And so if you think this isn't going to happen, you're wrong. It will happen because there are monies to do this. And it's just as sad to see our city be subjected to something like this after we've worked so hard to get the city where it is today. And I just, I got to emphasize, you got to spread this stuff around so that you don't have such a big impact to the properties surrounding the area where you're going to dump all this. And you're dumping it in my district and it's, it's not a, it's not a solution. It's, it's just awful.
Ms. Brenner.
I, I like Nancy Scarborough's suggestion about not turning our homework in early because what, it's not like the teachers are going to look favorably upon us if we turn this in early rather than later when everybody else is turning theirs in. And I, I do think that there's some advantage to that. And I also, I'm not vacillating between one and two, I'm more between two and three because I agree with what Debbie and Nancy both said about pushback, like start low and then let them push back with us. I don't, I don't see any advantage to us coming in at what we're hoping to actually get them to accept. And, and, you know, one of the things that the developers have told us is that these are not going to be slum, slums that we're developing, that what they say they can do at 60, 40 is very desirable housing accommodations and that the people that they choose to live in the lower-income units are people that fit in with their other tenants who are at the market, in the market rate units. So they're families that need a little extra assistance, but what they've told us is that they pay their rent on time, that they are very appreciative for these units and that they, the developers don't see this as being something that they don't, because they're talking about building these to keep long-term, not to build and sell. So I think there's a lot for us to know. There's still a lot for us to talk about and that, you know, that inclusionary policy is top of the list. We really have to talk about that. So the sooner that we can get those scheduled and the more we can delay actually submitting this to HCD, I think we're better off in the long run.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon.
Yes, thank you. Just to echo, can you hear me okay? I hear an echo. I'm having an audio issue. I wanted to support what, and empathize with Mr. Duffield on his district. I think that there is a simple solution and just to carry forward what Ms. Brenner was saying, as we've been talking with developers, in order to do the quality affordable, they need to have the market rate as a better mix. So 60 market rate, 40% affordable. And that number in the airport area can be reached by adjusting that percentage with just a few more hundred market rates than the, than it, than they can come in, the developer can come in and not create blight in that community and do quality construction, quality architecture. And just as Ms. Brenner said, it's for middle-income workers, our teachers, our firefighters. Those are the people that qualify for that income, lower-middle income category. So I would say let's just continue to fine-tune that number. I hate to put all the burden on airport area, but if we adjust and get more market rate in there, that helps subsidize, that brings in the attractive developers that are subsidizing with the, with their financing and then they, the market rate subsidizes the lower affordability. So we, no one wants to put blight in our community, but if we work with, positively with developers who can do it and we work with them, I think that's a possible solution. I do want to echo what Ms. Scarborough said earlier in her public comments about 1,500. I mean, let's, let's go for the max and if we have to scale it back, we'll scale it back. But I say 1,500 ADUs because we know there are many properties in Newport Beach that have the acreage that could accommodate an ADU. And as more and more people understand the benefits of that with an aging population and families living together for economic reasons, it may really be a tremendous solution. And I guess that's it. I'd like to see that inclusionary discussion sooner rather than later, and I don't think we have to be the first ones to turn our plan in. Other cities, I know some cities haven't even started yet and they're not even involving the community. I think we're, we've gone through a two-year process, deep dives with our community and we've got all the brains with Banning Ranch and the ocean and the wildfire areas. We've got really good reasons why we're working really hard to do it and accommodate within the confines where we can build and develop. And we've got good developers to work with us to preserve what's good about Newport Beach. Thank you.
Mr. Muldoon.
Yeah, thank you. Two things. The buffer is for us. It's not for the state. The state's quota is a state's quota. It's based on an equation. It's what it's going to be. We've already appealed it. It's the number it is, it's the number it is. For every city, you can help, you can pull out your calculator and figure out what the numbers are, correct, Simone?
Right.
The buffer is for us.
Correct.
The buffer actually, believe it or not, you, now think really hard about this because you're, you're not thinking about it right. It gives us the ability to play a little bit of cat and mouse and approve a developer having a less, a lower percentage of low-income housing, saying yes to them, putting those flexible units somewhere else and then having them never be brought to us. So it, you know, it's not, you're thinking of it sort of, and the way I was thinking of it before until I had a long conversation with Simone today on the phone. So I think if we keep having that conversation, people will understand the wisdom of a buffer. It doesn't need to be incredibly high, by the way. So it could be like what Councilman O'Neill said, somewhere in between. But the buffer is for us. The buffer is not a saying, we're going to build more. The buffer gives us planning flexibility. Regarding Councilman Duffield's district, I think the solution possibly is just to add more above-moderate units in the airport area to get to about 60% and then above-moderate and then 40% affordable like all the other areas. So just treating them the same as others is, is what I would support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comment? Any other comment from the neighbors? Zoom? We get, oh.
Good evening, Charles Klob. I hadn't planned on speaking today, but I think I can help address all of your concerns if you'll look to your slide 17, option three. You'll note that option three has the highest buffers in each area and that is because it has the highest percentage of affordable in ADU's. ADU's spread the pain around the entire city. They don't concentrate it on one area. So I encourage you to direct staff tonight to consider some version of option three and not a hybrid of one or two. It will lessen the pain from one area and spread it around. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Before we recess for closed session, do any council members have a conflict of interest related to the closed session item that they would like to announce?
Just looking at you. I don't know why. Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I do have a conflict of interest due to real property interests for one of them.
All right. Anyone else? Mr. Harp?
And just for clarification, that'd be item 4B that has the conflict. City council during a closed session to meet with the city's labor negotiators to discuss negotiations with the Association of Newport Beach Ocean Lifeguards and the Newport Beach Police Association. And the city council will meet with the city's real property negotiator, negotiator to provide direction regarding lease negotiations with RD Olson related to the properties located at 3,300 Newport Boulevard and 475 32nd Street. And that's all set forth on the agenda under items 4A and B. Thank you.
Okay, we will recess until 6:30? Yes.
30, did you say?
Sounds good to me. Thank you.